We're with a second folks as we get up to speed online here.
Good. I got six thirty, actually a little bit after. I have a rise for the pledge, please. I'd like to leave this.
Thank you. We have enough seat, we have enough seats for everybody. Mike, you want me to find your chair? Okay, all right, okay. Ray, Ray, you want to open this up tonight, please?
Yeah, let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here today, we humbly ask for your guidance and wisdom in our discussions. May we listen attentively to one another, speak with respect, and seek your will in all our decisions. Grant us clarity of thought and open hearts as we work together for the common good. We thank you for this opportunity to come together and pray for your blessings upon our meeting. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thanks, Ray. Roll call for me, Vicki.
Missionary Hall. Missionary School. Missionary. Missionary Dan Alston. Mission Heaven.
Here, thank you, Vicki. Public comments, first I want to mention again, if anyone has a hard time hearing us, please get my attention. Sometimes I need to speak up, sometimes some of us need to speak up, and if it's hard for us to hear, please say so. I'll open up the floor for public comment, we do stick to three minutes, please, and you'll hear a chime if you need the entire three minutes, then I'll ask you to, I'll thank you at that point, so.
I just, I'm gonna read a statement. We, who are members of the Six Mile Lake Association, have petitioned the County Board of Commissioners for years concerning the flooding issues on the upper chain. We have been ignored, and the results are now thousands of feet of flooded shorelines and hundreds of structures and homes are underwater. It's time for the commissioners to pay attention to what is going on on the chain. I understand that you want a safety center and a jail and, but with the damages that we continue to incur year after year with this flooding, it's time for you guys to take a look at the dam, the Beller Dam, and spend some money and fix our situation there. And I'm speaking on behalf of 150 of our members, Six Mile Lake, and just so you know, we did have a meeting last week with met with people on St. Clair Lake as well. They're very upset, all of us are upset, and something needs to be done. And I understand Leslie has an action plan and that she's on the agenda for May 1st, but I know you're willing to spend eight and a half million dollars on a jail and a safety center. But we need you to think of the safety of those of us that live on the chain and how much money that revenue generates in property taxes and in tourism. We need you guys to help us and do something and take some steps and correct the Beller Dam. Thank you very much. I know it's a hard job. I know you guys are on meetings all the time. And thank you, Bill, for coming to my house. Thank you, Jairus, for getting back with me. Thank you, Ray, for being my commissioner and for calling me when you were downstate on this, and congratulations, Vicki.
Thank you. Thanks, Sherry. I didn't mention, many people know us and we know them. Obviously, you know Sherry Hogan, but if you'd like to give us your name and the township you're from, that's fine, you're not required to, so. Anyone else? Yes, John? Oh, Dale?
So Dale Eshenberg, Lena Township. So the question is whether we should replace the current jail with a new jail, and we just want to say most people can be in favor of a new jail if the cost is managed against a reasonable target. Fifty point four million dollars overall cost was perceived too much in the November 2024 election. Vice has provided votes and is largely showing that construction cost is based primarily on square footage. In other words, if we can minimize square foot, we can better manage costs. However, each time we asked for an update, quote, over time, for a fixed cost outcome, the square footage reduced, showing that it behooves us to decide how to go forward soon. In place, developing a floor plan of our, of our must-have space in square footage is important to get ahead of the overall activity, cost, and planning. However, we don't, we don't necessarily want to pass up opportunity to support what Sheriff Kevin Oak and Sherry Knight, our jail administrators, trying to achieve by planning to prevent crime. They currently have a manual system to evaluate individuals coming into the jail and then are using North Country Mental Health Services and another group in Traverse City, Catholic Services, for substance abuse counseling. As such, we support this effort and see that it should be planned for being in the new jail. If and when the old jail is removed, we know that 9/11 dispatch needs to be relocated. Also, there needs to be space for the state patrol officers. If, if we could gain agreement to access restricted funds for a new facility, we believe there would be greater support for the facility administration increasing square footage. We would appreciate the county administration to investigate the use of restricted funds further. We have a revenue stream to pay back bonds, but the interest to bring funds forward to start design and construction is difficult to accept unless we can manage the square footage and the corresponding total project cost. Our overall intent is to support a new facility, which is in one campus-like environment, as desired by, by Kevin and the whole crew here, where efficiency and effectiveness come about while we gain towards influencing and counseling inmates, advising them to manage behaviors to prevent continued actions that got them into the bad decisions previously. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate you being able to talk.
Thanks, Dale.
Hi, my name is Dorothy Eshenberg, and I'm from Lena Township. Thank you for giving our comments consideration and listening to what we have to say. With regard to the new jail public safety center, I talked to a large number of voters about the funding, and I would like to share with you much of the feedback I heard from them. When asked if I could talk to them about the new jail public safety center, a large number said, I thought we turned the new jail down. When asked if they were aware how much money the county was planning to spend to build the public safety center, most voters said they were not aware. After learning that 25 million in bonds would be issued, plus 16.9 million in interest on the bonds, added to the eight and a half million saved amounted to 50.4 million, most said that it was too much debt and for too long. Many voters agree, we need a new jail. Some of the voters said it was unnecessary to build a building for the sheriff and the administration. Some of the voters said, we don't need a new jail. Overall, I felt the majority of voters will support a new jail public safety center as long as the debt is manageable and for much, a much shorter period of time. I sincerely hope you will listen to what your voters are saying because it's representative of the people of Antrim County who signed our petition. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. John?
Yeah, I don't know if this is a new protocol, but I feel like Smither and Lansing did this in the Oval Office. Really, really, that's our tourist. And then, this was an Antrim County paper, photo of representatives of this board back in 1951. There were 15 people on the board. Now, you don't have to wear a suit, but I think this board is imbalanced, I think it's really not representing enough people. Then again, 15 people here on the board. And then here is another one where they're talking about the public safety center, and, and they talk about a jail. Well, I remember Terry telling us all about this new safety center. It was going to be 56 beds. And then I found out that it's going to be a two unit. So where are we going to get all these inmates from? Are we going to import them? Are we going into business? That's another thing, put it in here, that's a 56 bed unit. And, and then you have to furnish it, you have to heat it, you have to maintain it, you have to have three pots or a cot. And that's never talked about with all this stuff. It's just, oh, we need to build it. But we have eight and a half million dollars later on. Now, we could put on the rest of this building because we don't have a million dollars to do it. And we got to build it. Eight and a half million dollars, and we're bringing it here, we can totally get to a really nice comfortable place for everyone to be accommodated. And that's something that should really be, 56 beds, we need a two year jail here, a two year prison. That's, and going to business of bringing other people into this county to have a nice place, a nice new place to stay. And then they might even not, not stay here, as they, you know, as their term expires. So that, I think, has to be announced to everybody that this isn't just a regular, you know, jail that they want. They want a real prison here. And that's where I look at it. And where did we get eight and a half million dollars? A second set of bricks, is there, like, a capper's? Top brands are going to find a, for, they've got money, you pay the budget, and then we take all the other taxes and, and put it into investments. Who's the same heckman? We've got bad roads, really bad roads, and, and we can't, we brought it in. And, and that all costs money, too. We have this siren that's always showing, where I have the bomb on the corners, that is really going to be seen about. So, going back to the so-called safety center, I would think that the information given to the public about this 56 bed safety center. I, I just don't see, we're going into business of other inmates.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Dan. Anyone else? Richard?
Hi, I'm Richard Christie, Bank Township. Like to thank all of you for the hard work that you do for our county here. At your February 6, 25 meeting, many folks presented compelling information in an effort to dissuade you from proceeding with a 25-year, $25 million bond proposal. When, by a three to two margin, you proceeded, some of us believed so strongly that you had misstepped that we formed Antrim Citizens for Common Sense and undertook the successful petition effort. I speak for Antrim Citizens for Common Sense here today. We are concerned, if not convinced, that's what, what is presently on the table is too costly for our county. From the response we received from petition signers, we believe the sentiment and perception of majority of voters is the same, which is logical since the present plan is more money than what the voters turned down just in November. Antrim Citizens for Common Sense haven't just been working hard collecting signatures. Instead, at the same time, we've diligently researched options, analyzed data, had many meetings and much dialogue in an effort to move forward alternate ideas that would allow our county to build what's needed at a cost that does make sense. As most, if not all of you have, in varying degrees, been involved in this dialogue, you know that there are numerous ideas that deserve further exploration and discussion. While we don't want to delay this project, we do need more time to convince, to continue the dialogue that's really getting going at a meaningful level just recently. Our successful petition effort, along with Board of Commission cooperation, gives us that opportunity. While the petition can result in a county-wide election to decide the present bond proposal, we have another option that we believe is better. It could save time for this project overall. Instead of having an election, which couldn't happen before August, we could get much more done in the interim and hopefully move the whole project ahead faster. And also, we could save a lot of money. We've been told by the clerk that it would cost the county $63,000 to conduct a countywide election, plus, of course, a lot more money that is going to be spent privately on both sides. We would much rather spend our energy and resources working together for a solution than fighting in what is going to be a very contentious election and campaign all summer long. As you know, our clerk has confirmed that an election can be avoided by a simple two-step process, and the first step involves you, the Board of Commissioners, rescinding your February 6 board decision. And I, I believe that ideally, that, that decision could be made tonight. If I'm wrong about that, and it can't be then for whatever reason, then you would have one more meeting to make that decision in order to beat a May 17 deadline for the August election. Let's all work together and build what Antrim County really needs at a common sense cost. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Anyone else? Yes, Cap?
Thanks for letting me talk here. And this is a story, this is a story. This is not taking sides. Because I'm here trying to figure out what's going on. I'm happy to hear that some of these people who signed this petition are thinking about working in a collaborative effort. But when I met the petitioners, it sounded like it was just a no, 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 no sense. So I hope we clarify that, that the people who want to work together are actually thinking about building something, just maybe something different than what was proposed. But I'm going to tell you a story. So years ago, we used to have a farm market on the corner where there's a coffee center now in Bel Air. Ran by a guy named Carlos Vaughn. I worked for that guy as a young farm boy and for many years. And one year, we had deer trouble, so the DNR gave us a permission to shoot deer day or night. And I worked all day on the farm, and late at night, I get out there and I have to shoot two deer. Enrolls the police, Antrim County Sheriff Patrol, lights on, siren, no sirens, lights on. I'm standing in front of my pickup truck, two pistols come out, one officer screaming at the other officer to settle down, that officer screaming orders at me, and I see two pistols and headlights coming straight up. And the officer that's kind of screaming and a bit out of control is being told by the other officer to settle down. Well, the officer that's a bit out of control handcuffs me, throws me over the hood of my truck, brings me, brings me down the chair. Not too long later, Carlos Vaughn came along, and I'm out, back out in the field picking up my truck. Years later, one of my partners sent me a patient to do surgery on, and I introduced myself, and this officer said, or I asked this gentleman, what'd you do for a living? He said, I'm Antrim County officer. Retired. And I said, do you remember? And he did remember, and he was there. And I said, were you the guy that was in control and calm? Or were you the guy that was shaking a pistol at me and throwing, throwing me over the hood of my truck? Turns out Officer Smith was the guy in control, and I thanked him a lot, and I appreciate that kind of officer. And if we're going to support our police department, we're going to have to do it right, and we want those kinds of officers. You keep them in an old building that's unsafe, you got a recruitment problem, you'll have a quality problem. And not one person in this room doesn't want a quality officer to show up at their, at their house when they need them. So I hope that this group of people that are concerned here and the rest of their out here listening to this understand we need this, we need a center. It's just what kind of center we need. But the petition that was out there and the petitioners that were out there having assigned that petition weren't relaying that information, not the ones I met. The information they relayed was, we need no center.
Thank you. Anyone else? Night. What's going, slide? Okay, I'll move on, move on, move on with our agenda then. May I get a motion to approve our agenda, please?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second, thank you. Move to second name discussion. All of the fair, please say aye.
Yes.
Something you want to post? Minutes from April 4th, any corrections to the minutes?
Is it third or fourth?
April. Sorry, I'm looking.
Yeah. Good, I got it. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
And I, I'm sorry, Terry, I should have mentioned beforehand, if we go to page third page under County Administrators Report, second paragraph, Jason, I think you questioned any news on the Bel Air lofts? Or did you question some Bel Air lawsuit?
I think it was the lofts. Oh, it was, Joe. Okay. Thank you.
All right, Vicki, you've got that?
I got it.
Fantastic, sorry, Terry.
Change the motion to accept it is amended.
I'll second. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those who bear, please say aye. Any, these are reports, any committee reports?
We, I got, go ahead, Ray, see your hand up, sorry.
The, the Antrim County Road Commission had an emergency meeting last week. I attended that, and there's a lot of, a lot of damage, tree damage from the ice storm that we had on the eastern part of the county, specifically Lakes of the North, which is Mansalona Township and Star Township. And then you got Warner Township, too, on the far east side. So they had an emergency meeting to approve more money to, for the cleanup, and it was the, the board, the, the road commission board voted three to zero to approve up to $350,000 for the cleanup. I, then I, I had a regular, the regular road commission meeting on Tuesday, and there, I think they spent maybe about half of it so far, but the road commission is doing a phenomenal job. They really, really are, so. And then Burke had contracted, it was, it's horn logging, I think, I think that's, it's horn, but to, to do some major cleanup that the, the road commission, just they would be there forever, you know, so they have this company and they're doing a phenomenal job, and it looks like then, you know, they're going to get it taken care of, so.
Thanks, Ray. Yep, Terry.
We had a health department meeting on Tuesday, it was to discuss the budget cut. They had, they have a $3 million cut from the state, i.e. federal government. They did away with the two lab techs and a lab tech administrative assistant, and they closed the lab that was in Gaylord. So now when they do blood draws and stuff to have testing done, it'll have to go to the state lab. It just adds an extra date to the, the results, but that's what they had to do to control that expense, so. That was all I have on that.
Thank you, Jason.
Same meeting, I was at the health, special meeting of Board of Health. That really stemmed back, they thought they're going to have COVID funding a little longer, so that's really what that is, is a cut to COVID funding, so it's not, I mean, is it taking away, you know, services for our people? Yes, but we, they kind of expanded on the whole COVID thing, and they were using it within, you know, the parameters, but they were, you know, using it to benefit the constituents, but it was COVID, and they knew it was going to come to an end. They were hoping it was going to be another 18 months is what they, they were told before, but then there was, they had a meeting on, what was it, the first or the second, and they had, their funding was cut on the 31st before they even had a meeting, so. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thanks, Jeff. Cheers.
North Country Community Mental Health had a meeting today, and we passed a cost containment plan. I've spoke before that all the mental healths in our region are, are struggling financially, but we were laying down some concrete steps to get our budget back under control, and really, it seems like some of the issue is Medicare and Medicaid. We're required to serve everyone, and sometimes the state reimburses us, and sometimes they don't.
Thanks, Jess. Okay. There's no unfinished business tonight. We need a new business, claims and accounts. In the amount, looking for a motion, preventing the council, the amount of $118,971.
Four cents.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion, thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question. Can I get some information on what number 21 is, please?
Number 21, that's the, the dare shirts for the, the kids that go through a dare program. They got their little t-shirt at the, okay.
That comes right out of his account. It's one raised through everything.
Okay.
Oh, I do have a question, sorry. I know we, we don't have the animal control here, but I got a couple of questions. Is it usual for us to cremate animals?
Not normally. I will follow up on it.
That one, and then, did we take in some herd animals again, or is that?
Yeah, yeah, there were several of the annual vaccinations and.
No, that's normal stuff, though, yeah, yeah, yeah. Just making sure we didn't.
I haven't heard anything about a horde.
Yeah.
What views do animals lately?
What number, Jason?
Oh, shoot. 25 and where was the? What was the other one? 18 and 25.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll follow up and sign.
I was curious what happened there, we usually don't. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a question on the motion. The motion I heard was 118,971.54.
Yeah.
And my paper says 51.
Yeah, my, my apologies, there were two of the credits that were in 99 cents instead of 90, and so, yeah.
That's correct, 51 is correct, I could mean my right.
Thanks.
Any other questions? There is motion in a second, all those who bear, please say aye.
Yes.
Appointments and annual reports tonight, we have equalization director here with us. We also have Miller-Jelk Rapids talking about the harbor and the Antrim County Treasurers report. I have indicated to everyone that I will, the presenters have 15 minutes to speak with us if they need that entire time, that's wonderful. I'm not trying to minimize anything that anyone has to say to us, but just trying to keep us on task. I'm saying 15 minutes, I don't control the board, so there could be a lot of questions that take us longer than that. But if the presenters could just be conscious of the time, I appreciate it. So, I, Jamie, can we start with you, please?
Good evening, honorable members of the Board of Commissioners. As you know, I'm Jamie Howterman, your Equalization Director. So I will go through this report with you for the audience. I will let you know that we'll have the report published on our website by noon. If anybody wants to look at any of that financial reporting, there's already some substantial amounts, I mean, to reporting available on there. So as we go through your report, pages one through three are the official state report requirement, the L4024, Statement of Acreages and Valuations. What you'll see as you progress through pages four through nine are a breakdown by class with their assessed value, the actual ratio that was used, and our recommended county equalized value and true cash value. Pages 10 and 11 are a percentage of change from year over year for the SCV with the recommended county equalized value for this year. If you look at the residential class specifically, it accounts for the majority of the property within the county. If you look at the residential class specifically, it accounts for the majority of the property within the county. It grew to a rate of twelve point seven three percent, nearly matching the twelve point nine two percent of growth that we saw overall. Page fourteen is a recap of the assessed value by unit and the recommended county equalized value, making the assessed value and the county equalized value the same numbers. Um, you'll see that there was no change on that report. Ultimately, what that report is um, is, is an example of the diligence and dedication of our assessors and our local boards of review members. Um, they, they did a great job this year and in the months leading up to the assessment change notices going out. Um, the month of February specifically, we did a lot of auditing, working back and forth with the townships and the assessors um, to correct any deficiencies. From that point, March Board of Review took over. There were very few changes this year in March Board of Review numbers. They did a great job. Um, we appreciate the relationship that we have with those assessors and the township Board of Review members. Page fifteen is a snapshot. It's what I will refer to as the most popular page in the report. Um, the one that most people refer to and often ask me questions about. Um, so that page shows the county equalized value and it also gives you the first snapshot of our taxable value. As you know, taxable value is what tax bills are based off of, different from county equalized value, which just shows you an overall valuation of property. So that increase this year, um, has gone up significantly since I started working with you in two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and sixteen, we saw just, just under a one percent growth. Um, we've come a long way in that short nine years, not because of me. Uh, we follow the market and, and we, um, report on the market. We don't create the market. Um, however, um, that, that is steadily inclined over the years. Um, this year at a twelve point nine two percent, it is slightly lower than the last couple of years. Um, however, uh, it is still inclining significantly. If you recall, our consumer pricing index increase this year was three point one percent. So we're substantially ahead of that consumer price index number at three point one percent. Um, the taxable value growth, as you'll see on that next slide, um, moved from, uh, last year was it, um, I should go back a couple of years, twenty twenty-three, we saw an eight point four two percent um, increase in taxable value last year, nine percent. This year, seven point three four. What does that mean? That means that we still have a significantly high, uh, residential property, um, real estate market. Um, substantially high still, um, keeping in mind that three point one percent would, would be normal-ish. Um, so you're seeing that seven point three four. On my point in telling you the prior two-year numbers that we are starting to come down from that, from that really high, um, peak in the residential values, we're starting to come down pretty significantly. Um, I, I see that trend continuing, um. So let's see. The last two pages of your report, um, show you that relationship between the taxable value, or I'm sorry, the assessed value in all of those years, about a thirty-year span. Um, and it shows you kind of that graph of how that's moving, um, that upward trend. You saw that upward trend in the, in the mid-two thousands and now you're seeing that upward trend again. Um, if you recall the two thousand and seven, eight, where that really came down, at some point we will come down again and, and the market will adjust. Um, I stood here last year and told you I thought that that would probably start happening and it did not. Um, it's slowing like I said, but it absolutely is not, is not coming back down. Um, I, I don't anticipate any huge drop for next year, right? And I track that consumer price index. Um, it's a twenty-four month rolling calendar. I'm gonna try to get a gauge for you of what I think it's going to be for next year. Uh, right now they're trending two point one percent and that's if we stay fairly stable. Uh, consumer price index, um, anybody that follows that saw that it came down. Um, it was lower than expectations this past month. They're looking at that probably coming down again. Um, so ultimately what I tell taxpayers is if you see low gas prices, like your car gas pump prices, um, as those come down generally, you'll see that consumer price index come down with it and then you'll start to see values start to stabilize. Do you have any questions for me about the report?
Cheers. Cheers.
Yeah, page sixteen, uh, the highest township that went up was Jordan Township. It was almost twelve percent. Any, any comments on, I mean, the rest of them are pretty close to your average.
Exactly. And so, so I can see that there were more sales of buying and selling um, there this year that were significantly different in value. So when they uncap, so if you've ever heard of this taxable value on camping, that's where they're capturing those dollars. And so there were a lot of homes that had been, you know, held for a long time at a low taxable value. When they'll sell, that's where they're capturing that amount. You'll also see, um, you, you can done on that, that highest one in the taxable value. The highest one in the assessed value group, um, was, was Central Lake this year. And so Central Lake last year went through a reappraisal process and they put a whole bunch of value back on that assessment rule. What you'll see is that didn't necessarily equate to tax, taxable value. It equated to more fairness and uniform process. So if you don't have any other questions for me, I'll say you are in the equalization process, um, for the month of April. Um, if you would like to pass your, um, report tonight, that would be lovely. Um, if there are things that you still want to investigate, you can do that through the month of April by holding a special meeting at the end of April to stay in compliance with state tax mission.
Jamie, you did a wonderful job.
Thank you. Uh, as I was driving here today, I said to my husband, who happened to come with me. Um, this is my tenth year of working with Antrim County, my ninth equalization report for you. Um, I still continue to love every minute of working with you. Um, I find, I find your, um, the taxpayers to be wonderful. The, uh, assessors, um, are, are great to work with. I love working with the township elected officials. Um, we seem to do real well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jamie. Appreciate it. Um, we do have, uh, uh, we do have a, a agenda item, um, and I am looking for a motion, if anyone cares, to that the twenty twenty-five Antrim County Equalization Report be accepted as presented at the Chairman William Heffron, Director of Equalization Jamie Howserman, and County Clerk Victoria Bishop be authorized to sign the statement of acreages and valuations of four, one fours as equalized and the assessment role certifications, L four oh three seven and twenty-six ninety-one countywide totals and individually for each municipality be accepted. It would be resolution number, Vicki, do we know the resolution number?
Well.
Okay.
Um, I'll make that motion. I'll support.
Thank you.
Uh, with one, I got one thing. Uh, now therefore be resolved down there. Still has Cheryl guy.
Yeah.
He's supposed to?
I don't, I don't.
No.
Believe so.
Okay, so we need to.
It's also that, uh.
Yeah, 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 correction, please.
They'll correct them. Yeah, that's a, a clerical thing that's.
Yeah, just making sure.
Okay. Any other, uh, moved in second, any other questions? Discussions? Okay, I'll ask for a roll call. We'll, uh, Vicki.
Okay. Commissioner Heffron.
Yes.
Commissioner Elwood.
Yes.
Commissioner Stola.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruby.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Alston.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. And thank you again, Jamie. Appreciate it. Have a safe trip home. Yep, yep.
You're good.
Okay, uh, we have some guests here from the Village of Elk Rapids, uh, tonight, please.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, my name is Jay Bicho. I am the interim village manager for the village of Elk Rapids. We appreciate the opportunity to talk with you tonight about our harbor. I do have, um, several people with us tonight are harbor master Mike Singleton is here, our village president, um, Tom Stevenson is here. Uh, I have three members of the harbor commission that are, are here tonight. We have an engineer that has worked on the, uh, design, uh, done the design work for this land, I guess I want to talk to you about. So you're probably accustomed to having people come and ask for money and I won't be doing that tonight. We're, we're really just asking for Antrim County uh, to support the concept of what we're talking about for this. We call it a harbor expansion. Um, and there will be some, there would be some expansion, but the thing that is is probably more, uh, critical is changing the orientation of the harbor itself. We have experienced, um, every year approximately a hundred thousand dollars in dredging that's necessary just to keep the channel open because of the direction of the mouth of harbor. So one of the things would be to, uh, then re, uh, we'll, I'll let you talk about this because I'm not an engineer by any stretch, but, uh, you know, how this will reorient and, uh, will reduce, uh, at least the the, the sand that would be normally washed into that, um, at the same time, it also improves some of the fish habitat, uh, you know, in that, that particular area. So this is a project that, um, has been discussed for some time, but just to give you a little bit of a history about this harbor. Um, I believe that the, the, you know, there's, has been a natural harbor, but that was actually used for commercial purposes, starting in the eighteen seventies. Iron ore was brought in and there were smelters there then that processed, uh, the iron ore, which is why we have all the slag that you hear about, uh, in that area. Yeah, I think that, uh, the iron ore processing, uh, continued for about a forty-year period or so into the early uh, nineteen, you know, nineteen hundreds, uh, at any rate. After that, it was basically a more recreational harbor. And in the, uh, early nineteen fifties, the, uh, Rotary um, got involved in doing improvements to that harbor to, you know, understanding that this would have a uh, major impact for the village of Elk Rapids as far as the commercial businesses are concerned. And that's certainly turned out to be the case, um. And I, uh, from what I've read, I believe that this harbor, um, is the most active harbor north of Muskegon along, uh, Long Lake, Michigan, which is pretty remarkable for relatively small small community. So, um, I think Mike can attest to the popularity of that harbor just based on um, the, the length of waiting list we have for, uh, people wanting to be able to get boat slips in there. Certainly what we're talking about with changes in this harbor is not going to eliminate, uh, that waiting list. It'll it'll prove things, uh, for certain, but um, and there are, um, two phases that we're looking at with this. With the harbor plan, there's an upper harbor that's entirely, um, within the village of Elk Rapids that really needs some work done, uh, large part for safety reasons and what have you. And then the lower harbor and the reason we're here to talk about this and hopefully we have, uh, we got the slides that were, you know, said.
We can actually. We.
Show you, um, part of what the, the ask is as far as, is having support from, uh, from Antrim County is because Antrim County actually, um, owns part of, uh, part of the harbor. I think there might be a different slide perhaps that has a little bit more, um. It's zoomed in as that slide a little bit.
The next slide.
You could, yeah, there we go.
I have one.
So. Great. I think where the K, roughly where the K is, I, you can see that on the, um, on the schematic here, that is the area, um, that is, that is controlled by Antrim County just along that of that particular stretch. So when we when we eventually get into doing this project, it's gonna be, you know, sizable amount of funds, but it's gonna involve a lot of entities from the Army Corps of Engineer, uh, to the state of Michigan, different agencies at least, uh, to An, Antrim County and to Elk Rapids Township, you know, along, along with, of course, the the village of Elk Rapids. So it's gonna take, you know, it's gonna take, uh, collaboration from all of these entities. But again, all we're, we're talking about at this point and eventually would need, um, from Antrim County is support to, uh, proceed with this, with this project, not, not, uh, no dollar amount to, to the county at all.
I'll let you, there, uh, you go. Thanks for having me. My name is Greg Wykamp. I'm the President of Edgewater Resources. I'm actually a landscape architect and park designer and waterfront designer is how I start this. And I have a whole team of engineers and architects that work with name. My partner's a coastal engineer with fifteen years' experience. And if we can back the slide up magically back it up one side, we'll see the aerial photo. Okay. Um, so what we're looking at right in here is that you see the harbor there, of course, and you see what's called Dam Beach. Um, and just as a quick reminder is Dam Beach is created land. It was created when they excavated and expanded that harbor basin. And so that park that you see there in the foreground, that's your park is has been, is, it, it's not an actually existing piece of land. It's been, been created partly partially through the excavation. And you can see that entry there. Um, that harbor entry there, uh, goes about forty-five miles. We have what we call fetch, which is the amount of space that a wave can, can build up over time. And that's about forty-five miles of open water. And in that much water, you can get a lot of wave action. So what happens right now with the way this is, uh, entry is designed is that opening goes straight to the north, allows all the wave energy to come straight into the gut of the marina. And that's the fuel that operated the end. And so it's, it's not a, it's not how we would design a marina today for safety. Um, so if we can jump to the next slide, the mastermind, please. So the, the quick overview, the, the the number of challenges that we're asked to resolve really follow around a bunch of different things. And it's interesting, the conversation earlier about cost efficiency and saving money and being smart with our money. Number one, we have a dredging issue in this harbor. It's a hundred thousand dollars a year simply because we're allowing that sand, the lateral drift to come in, wrap around the harbor and fill it in every year. Uh, we consult that. We know how to make, just using those natural currents to direct that sand where we want to go. And that's where you see the sort of interesting shape the lines. So those little islands are designed to do a couple of things. Number one, they cut out that wave energy from the north. We now have a protected harbor entry. It's dramatically safer, uh, dramatically less damage to the interior of the harbor. Safer in every way in terms of navigation and water safety, but also should be a significant reduction in cost because those shapes, um, and these are, this is a notional plan. I don't want anybody to walk away feeling like it's gonna look exactly like this drug. This is a really conceptual plan. Um, and my partner, Jack Cox, has designed, uh, similar marina structures with these sort of, we call them segmented detached islands. And they do a number of things. They work just as well as the continuous breakwaters we always used to build in the past. But now they, by having those openings, it allows us to allow better water quality so that water can circulate through them better. But we can also direct, use, use them to direct the currents to put the sediment where we want it to go. We do not want the sediment to come into the harbor. We want it to go around the beach. So that's the goal here. And that's why you see that coverage, number one, to stop the energy coming from the north. Two, create a safer entry, uh, three, direct the sand around. We also have a little hook there at the top of Dam Beach. That's gonna allow, allow that sediment to collect and get captured right there on the beach. So that you'll like, you'll actually end up with a bigger beach. And when that eventually reaches a state called equilibrium, we can actually go in and, and dredge using a long reach from shore. So instead of spending a hundred thousand dollars, you might spend twenty. And that's the whole idea. This is all about just being super efficient with simple rock design, using it in a different way. We've done this in Illinois, Beach State Park. We've done it down in Florida. It's done. This is kind of the next generation coastal engineering. So as part of that, we're also looking at the way the interior of the harbor works. The other major factor in why the harbor is, is how it is, is the way the river comes in. And if we can go back one slide, please. There we go. So right now you can see that the, the south edge of the park is very straight and very flat. Right? So what I'm talking about is, is this edge right there. It's very flat and it's armored the whole way. If we can go back to the next slide, please. I'm actually gonna ask you to go just a little bit farther. One more slide. Actually, even one more than that. What I want to talk about is this shape here. Um, a little bit zoomed in. Let's just go back up to the overall plan, please, about two slides up. So what's important, one more up, please. It's like I'm talking Wizard of Oz. Appreciate you, love you all. So what's currently happening along that, that edge of Dam Beach is it's armored the whole way. And the reason it's armored the whole way is right now that river comes in and slams dead into it and that has to turn a hard left. And what we're actually showing here is to actually make a gentler, more softer curve. And it does mean, yes, we're pushing into the park just a little ways. We're not taking away the park. And it starts that we have a little bit more of a gentle curve and that's gonna allow that current to behave a little bit better. And now we're not gonna go introduce it, you know, it was just actually, it was over at, at Dockside today. You watch where the, the clam river comes out and the waves come in, you get all that confusion right there. It was just actually, it was over at dockside today. You watch where the clam river comes out and the waves come in. You get all that confusion right there. If you've seen. Similar situation here with the current coming in, waves coming in, you get a really uncomfortable wave climate situation. By pushing that, giving us a little bit of a curve, we soften that and we can take a lot of that stone off. So the stone that's on the shore now can be reused in the arming and we can have a soft rolling, which is dramatically better environmentally. We don't want to have armored doors anyplace. We don't have, so they have to have them. We need them in some places. Uh obviously, we need them at the north end to to knock the waves out. But what we're trying to do here is. Anytime we do a marina improvement, my goal uh is to make the waterfront as accessible as everybody's possible. There's always a sense of that. Marina is for those rich voters and they take all of our stuff. We're actually trying to leverage this whole entire project. To completely transform Dan Beach into a true native restoration. And so what you're seeing here is it's very much like the park you have now. But this would this would propose to take out all of invasive species, really focus on a really true ecological restoration of the dune ecology. Truly restoration because that used to be like that. But we can do that. We can build up exactly the earthplant materials, all of those things. It's going to have a softer, better wave climate on the interior and then have a soft shoreline and inside to have better water quality. Better access for the invertebrates to go back up and forth. It's going to be dramatically better habitat for everybody. Those rock structures actually also create better habitat for fish. We actually can size the rocks and put in little pockets of certain sized cobbles to support certain species of fish. And we've done this before working with Eagle um and some fisheries ecologists. It does have some small amount of marina expansion, a few essentially moving the docks here. And then you see the docks to the west there, uh the entry, those are primarily the transits and also an improved fuel dock here. So it's much safer without waves. Um so primary focus is how can this marine investor the community? How do we stop wasting money on just sort of senseless dredging? All of that is what this plan is intended to do. So if there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer. I can go for three more hours.
Thank you very much.
So questions from anybody?
The board have any questions? Yes, chairs.
How much land does Antrim County own there?
I don't know. Okay, but if I were to. Overlay.
Jer or Jeremy.
Yeah, it's right here. Uh we'll over here. There. This is questionable uh ownership, but. Divine ownership right here.
There's a lot of conversation about what can 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 should be done. From my perspective, what we're trying to do is create the most public publicly useful space. Most ecologically brack space and the lowest cost maintenance space for everybody. It's not taking anything away from the public. It's it's. It's actually, if anything, we're actually improving a lot. You can't quite see it on here. It's improving the ADA access. The the accessibility right now is is not great. Um this includes some paths that we go through. They don't jump out on page here because of course, when we illustrate and bound to the pretty. Um but there will be some paths where the vehicles can get in and do service and emergency work and things like that.
So so then my follow up question is, uh you said you're not asking Antrim County to pay it. Who's paying for it?
Well, you've got any spare cash. So uh typically how we fund this is so number one, there's the the this is a grant aid funded marina. Um we have worked uh with the um I've been working with Eagle for fifteen years now. We actually did the statewide facilities assessment to assess all eighty seven state harbors. This was one of them. Um so there is waterways funding, uh which uh depending on various things, you can get up to seventy thirty match. Or fifty fifty match. There's different ways to do that. There's also state funding um through the, you know, maybe Senator Newmuss. Uh for example, there's also um US Fish and Wildlife Service Boating Infrastructure Grant Funding, which pays for transient boating infrastructure. And so that would allow us to get up to a million and a half dollars from the from the federal government to do that. Um and there's also a clean vessel app grant, which will pay for brand new pump up. So there's a lot of grant funding because these are. These are really huge economic drivers for communities. So um we're not trying to expand it tremendously. We. Got other things to kind of balance out here, but you can't see us then we also have paddle craft access. That would be another thing. Uh that we'd like to get grant funding for uh support for wounded warriors programs about accessible boating and accessible kayak access. Um and those sorts. And so there's a bunch of funding for.
And what's the total project cost?
We're not there yet. So it's just a concept of getting there. We've had initial conversation with Eagle and the Corps and they they don't have. Certainly, there's a lengthy permitting process, but there's no fatal flaws here. They didn't go. So we're working on the cost estimate and everything else. But it's it's a significant project, of course. Um and we would attempt to reuse as much of the existing rock on site that's there. Currently, there's a a rock revetment, as you know, that runs. Pretty much right here and out. And so we want to pick up all that stone and just reuse it right on site. I'm a chief poller. I like to read stuff and save money.
Other questions for the presenters tonight?
Nice looking project.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Been a really community effort. We've been, we've had um at least, I don't know, five or six specialist steering committee groups. Uh with various voters and we've had three or four public meetings, the whole process and all that stuff to document if anybody wants to follow.
Thank you for taking the time to speak with us. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, Jay. Uh moving now, the um Antrim County Treasurers twenty twenty four annual report is for informational purposes only. But Sherry has joined us. If there is any questions for Sherry, hold on, hold on two seconds. We'll let the folks. Okay, um um any questions for Sherry? Yeah, Jeffs.
Sherry uh detailed report, a lot of information there. Uh you've done this for years. What's the most important thing? What's what's the highlights for us to know in your report of the past year?
The highlights in our office, I think, is um the cross training and um how well we interact with taxpayers and trying to answer their questions. Uh especially with the foreclosure process and what's happening and how they can make famous plans in order to get those taxes paid. So. Our goal, I don't want to foreclose on people's homes. Uh our goal is to try to work with them within the bounds of law. Uh get this page. That's basically, I will um say what you'll see in my next year's report. Our foreclosures are actually down this year. Um and again, it's mostly lakes of north lots, which is typical. It has been typical since the seven.
And and Jeremy, we don't have, we don't have Sherry's report. Um.
We can pull it up. Is there?
Yeah, there is a page. And for just for the public's interest, Sherry's report is available online with our packet. Um.
It's on also my, I put, actually, I put it up before I presented it to the board or sent it to the board. Um but it is on treasurer's page. All of my reports are on the treasurer's page. Um if you're interested.
Yes, there's a lot of, obviously, a whole bunch, whole bunch. I'm I'm looking um at, let's see, um electronically, I think it's page fourteen, Jeremy. Uh yes. Um so Sherry, what is TPF?
Um that's tax payment fund or um others, the liquid tax revolving fund. It's the fund that is used for us to purchase all of the liquid taxes from the local units, the villages and the townships. And then it's the fund that we use to disperse to the county, to the school districts for those taxes. We then, when we collect liquid tax, the money goes back in there along with foreclosure. Um which I do have a chart on another page, which uh shows a breakdown between uh. The funds that are foreclosure funds, which we have a fund for each of the years. Uh most of the years that are on there are foreclosure funds, which are restricted to the foreclosure process based on statute. Um the five one six zero 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 fund is the fund typically that is used for the monies flowing in and out. To pay for and purchase those liquid taxes, um which once a surplus is. Declared by me, then the board can make board action and those funds to. And I've already spent over four million dollars on it. I'm paying the current years to link to taxes. So as you look at. Those numbers um change because I had over four million dollars to liquid debt.
As I, I think I read in there soon, this report somewhere at three point eight five.
That was last year. Of course, I'm already into the new year um with the collection process. Um a lot of our funds, they're restricted, that use can only be used for what is intended purposes. Those purposes are by constitution, they're by enabling legislation, uh formal board action or external parties. Like the animal control donation fund, some of that is restricted because outside parties that gave us that money. Uh your mission on aging is restricted based on collecting the the taxes that we're collecting. Either metal bricks research, so many of our funds are restricted and have a specific intended purpose and that's why.
That was my, that was my question, I think. Uh what, I said, I did have one other question. Is, and I think you've already answered it.
Oh.
But can I, can I, can I borrow money from any of these accounts for other projects?
They're restricted. They have to be used for its intended purpose.
Okay.
So you can't take mission on aging money collected and use it at the airport. Or the road.
Okay, I I I thought that was the answer, but I just wanted to make sure. So any other other questions for Sherry?
Good job, as usual.
As always, Sherry, thank you very much.
If you have any detailed question on your funds, I would recommend.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept her annual report.
That's move a second and further discussion. All those people, please say aye.
Yeah.
Hi, anyone opposed? Uh I can see discussion uh proposed Public Safety Center. Um Jeremy has provided us with a uh memorandum um and also there was in our packet. Um the pantry citizens for common sense and 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 a kind of a a tally, a line code tally. I wasn't quite sure what that means. Matt and Vicki was kind enough to put a letter together for us to explain it uh explain it in my simple terms. So um I did leave copies of that on the back desk uh back desk back there. So if anyone in the public uh was interested in that. Um it is, it is back there. So um. Jeremy, I guess so uh uh would you like to start our discussion?
So strictly speaking, the um resolution that you passed. To move ahead with a bonding for twenty five, up to twenty five million dollars for up to twenty five years is a dead resolution. With with the petition satisfying the ten percent, that resolution is done. Um from this point, if you want to go forward with that same exact bonding mechanism, it has to go to a vote of the public. You don't have to take it to the vote of the public. Like I said, it is dead. But um it is an option if that's what this board wants to do. Otherwise, I would recommend checking other options. If we, after some time, the board does not feel that it's sure what it wants to move forward to with. I would highly encourage that we at least consider hiring an architect to start start a design. If if you have some kind of direction, because. Delays cost money, period. Now, I I I'm not trying to rush any process. Obviously, we've been at this for many years, but. Um my biggest concern is always making sure that we are not incurring costs that we do not need to incur.
Thanks, Jeremy. Terry.
On the um architect drawing, if we were going to do phased or full construction or. Whatever, we would still have to have that drawing to know for the construction manager to be able to give us a actual. True estimate of cost that all we're doing now is going by square footage and saying it's going to be thirty three and a half million dollars, but. Until we have an architectural drawing and be able to actually lay it out exactly according to plan, we will. We don't know what that number would be.
Yeah, you won't know, you won't know for sure what that number will be until the bits come in, period. Um. But uh I mean, for this project, it is a thirty three and a half million dollar estimated project, twenty five to twenty eight for the actual building itself. Uh more information always means better information. Uh but uh. Yeah, yeah, moving forward with it, no matter if you're planning on building something, if you, this board's intent is to move forward. Uh an architect would be my advised path to to make sure that we're keeping moving towards something. Um now, there's going to reach a point where. We're going to need further direction. If you want to phase, say, by building the whole jail first and and sheriff's offices later. That's going to be a different design eventually than building uh option E that that was laid in front of you. But um. But there's still lots of options. This isn't just an absolute stop. We've had, we had a productive conversation with Eschenberg's uh last week. I understand that Mr. Heffernan went with some others. Um but uh yeah, I I'm going to need some kind of direction from the board. On on how to move forward.
Oh, he's still going. So the next logical step, no matter what we decide to do, if we're going to do something, which. We need to do something. And everybody that that's here has said we need to do something. So the next logical step is to get an architect to draw up what we want to, what we want to build.
To to start that process at least, um the designs are always going to be more informative. Uh typically, the schools actually go out for designs. I mean, just as an example, schools quite often do a full design before they. Ever even start talking to the public about um the money that they need to build those designs. You can go either way. Um the way that this developed, it was. Started with a rough number and then was intent on focusing it. Um you can go either way, but ultimately you would have to commit to spending a significant amount of money, which would be over a million dollars.
And that would come out of the eight and a half million that we have set aside.
Yeah.
We're going to need that anyway, by the way.
Right, it wouldn't, any design wouldn't go to waste, even if you made changes later, but um obviously you want to focus your design. You definitely want your conversations to continue as you're also designing.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Cheers.
Yeah, I've had several constituents ask me. I mean, even if we move forward, it's going to be a couple of years. Um what would it cost to fix our jail to. Make it last for two, for three, for five years? I mean, we we have numbers that it's going to be expensive, but do we have more concrete numbers than that or?
No, I I mean realistically, the the problems that we're facing, I mean, we're, we've got. The roof coming up, we've got air handlers, air conditioners, things like that. Um one of the biggest numbers is plumbing. Right? We we keep getting clogs. Um. Uh most recently, we had a hot water heater burst that had to be replaced. We have to be able to provide the hot water. Um. These things will keep adding up. But I've presented that as an option. I know this board in the past at least wasn't interested in throwing good money after bad. But um to look at long, I I would at best. Say, you know, a million to two million per year to to try to make sure that. No, not to say that we're going to spend that every single year, just giving you a rough idea, but there's going to reach a point where it's. Okay, are we going to tear up the concrete and pull out the plumbing? Are we going to ship inmates off while we do that? Are we going to spend a couple million dollars to do that? And the risk always is, I mean, this is a giant liability. And certainly for somebody in my position, liability is always something I want to limit because that means cost to the county. Um if we ever end up in a lawsuit, for instance, then you're in a multimillion dollar lawsuit and you still have to fix the problem. So that's another impetus behind pushing towards fixing this. When you have a staircase that. Uh people are thrown down. For instance, somebody can get very seriously hurt in that situation. Um. Anything's about liability and um. It's a, it it's going to have to be a balance, but I I can't give you a specific number, unfortunately. It's a, it, it's going to have to be a balance, but I, I can't give you a specific number, unfortunately.
Chase?
Yeah, we, we talked about this in the past. Throwing good money at bad, you know, what year is this jail built? Nineteen fifty, alright, okay, nineteen fifty five, probably even through the eighties. They didn't, nobody planned on, like nowadays, you. It's working on it, expanding and everything else. You know, they built that jail not to get in, not to get out. And it's not easy to get to the plumbing, if I remember correctly, it's in the concrete walls, right?
The concrete floors.
Floors. And to, to all that up, I mean, that's, it's. It's a big expense. Was I comfortable last time we, we passed it? No. Do I think it needs to go to a vote? Yes. Do I think we need to? You know, I think we should have talked about this architecture thing a long time ago. Um, you know, what's the timeline on that? Is that going to make us go August, or is that going to make us go November? You know, that's.
Architectural designs, the full process. Usually around a year.
I know, yes.
Um. Uh, that doesn't mean. There are steps in between that, and it doesn't mean that you can't, if it's your sole focus, you can't. Um. Make that go a bit faster. It.
I know.
But yeah, I don't have, I don't, I think is, you know, we want to, that's going to help us get a concrete number.
Or a closer number and maybe make people more comfortable. You know, because I know it's going to be expensive to do, and I know it's, it. If this gets approved, we have to do it anyway. So, I mean, we're going to have to do it no matter what, get this architecture protected growing. Um, I'm just hoping it doesn't affect if we decide to go for a vote. That people aren't comfortable because we don't know that.
Sure.
Um, because of my, my eye, I think if we, we have to do it right from these votes. In my eyes, it's probably dead if we don't, they vote no this time. I mean.
Well, I mean, that's, that, that's your guys' decision, I'm, uh.
Same.
I'm, I'm along those lines, uh, I, my job is to get the information out there.
I'm just looking at you because you're right now.
I can see this. Uh, the direction, the direction of this project definitely was not at a level where we could have hired an architect sooner. Um, it was, it was clear. That, uh, we wanted to make sure there was support or interest in moving forward before spending that money. Um. It, it was good to hear that we have, uh, support, at least to understand that we do need something, so at least some of the information has gotten out there. We need to do something, um. But we're, we're just at that precipice, it's. In nineteen eighties, we were told this was a terrible design. Nineteen nineties, we were told it was an unsafe terrible sign. Two thousands, twenty tens, twenty. Twenty seventeen, um. We're, I don't know, I don't know how else to guide you, and the cost isn't going down.
Still going here, uh, I know that. Uh, nobody likes my term kick the can down the road, but, uh, you know. Sorry to say, that's what we did when there was nine of us, before I was on the board, I've been on about eight years or something now. I mean, they've been doing it a long time and for, for how many people that wanted to do this and didn't want to do it, yes, no. This architect, architectural drawing seems rather important. So, in my opinion, we got to get something done. So.
Um. Jeremy. To date, we have never hired any architect to draw up any specific plans. We were operating more of. General idea of what this is going to cost us.
Yes.
But, and why can't we continue to do that?
We can't. Uh, I, I mean, but. Um. We can't. But it's just, it's going to be very broad numbers and you're going to. Yeah, I'm going to advise you to head towards the worst case scenario. I mean, in my mind, thirty three and a half million was the worst case scenario. I'm not, I'm not the type of person that tries to make everything look rosy and sunshiny and then, oh, by the way, it's going to cost this much more later. Um.
And I appreciate that, Jeremy, I, I understand that.
Yeah, uh, so. If we don't. Um. I, I, I guess, uh. Well, it's not necessary, it's just meant as a, if you guys. Still aren't sure. If, I, I, I don't want to see this board in the same place where many boards have been in the past. Stuck on which way to move forward. It was, uh, simply a suggestion for a way to keep moving, similar to the annex building. We had a building falling apart, what was a way to keep moving forward? Uh, moving the sheriff's office out of there.
My, my concern with hiring an architect and, and you mentioned a billion dollars. Is that we spend a billion dollars on an architect? And then. We don't build it. That, that, that's my, that's my biggest, my biggest fear. I mean, uh, I, I'm just talking out loud. We spend money on an architect and this goes on the ballot and the under it's slowed down. Or, or you got a nice. I mean, man, that's not going to be used, that's, that's my fear, Jeremy.
Yeah, I have zero interest in wasting any money either, uh. It's really got to be the will of this board, or what, what are you? Where are you seeing the best investment for this money? Um, I can give you very spitballing answers, but I'm doing my best to get the guys. The guys that we've been talking to, to continue working for free for Antrim County to give us. A little bit clearer numbers on square footage if. If, say, you wanted to just build a jail, or if we were trying to break things down, or however that conversation goes. I need somebody. That's, that's going to work with us to keep doing. It doesn't necessarily have to be. A finalized design, but. But I've, I, I've got to keep working with somebody.
Yes.
And a million dollars is a big number, obviously, I don't take that lightly. But I've been, like I said, here for a while, and we kept throwing money at Vice or Bryce, whatever that one other place was. And it got nothing really substantial out of them. But, you know, we're, I think we were. You know, at a, at a point where we're, where the hell else we going? And we threw more money at them, and it was like. And they, I mean, what do we have for show for that?
It's a, we do, but, and the same token, we've never went anywhere with.
I, I'm not trying to be disagreeable, but, uh, a huge part of that was space study. Space studies are costly. We actually got it for a fairly.
Yeah.
Fairly good price. We know exactly how much space the sheriff needs, under sheriff needs. The, the detectives need, those are key pieces of information that build into an eventual disaster.
But what I'm saying is, we've spent that money, and where have we gone?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So. We have to. We got to make some sort of decision, and I know the people have to say yes or no, but same token, we have to give them concrete. Something, yeah, I mean, because that's a big number, they're like fifty million, you know, it depends on who you talk to, you know. Everybody out there has a different number they throw back at us when. I don't know where they come up with them sometimes, but, um. If we can give them a more, uh. Ballpark figure than, you know.
Big gamble, my friend, I mean, for me, I'm sorry.
It's a big gamble, but. We have to make decisions and, you know. It's tough decisions. They put us here, and I know those people that are naysayers and other people that agree. We want to do this, we want to do this, and we want to do that. You can't, sorry to say it, kick the can down the street. And if people keep emailing and saying we don't take things lightly, I, I pleasantly disagree with you. I take everything seriously. Yeah. Because. Who loses, who loses out when Elspeth loses money? More than anybody, probably in my area, so. And just like this, you know, it's, it's to help. The issues we have in my area to this jail and anything else that will be entailed with it. The help that we're going to give people.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to be insult, I did not mean to, but.
Yeah, I didn't say insulting, you know. You're good.
Good.
Cheers.
Yeah.
So, uh, architects drawings, um, I mean, we've talked to commissioners and administrators in counties that have built jails. Expert, you know. Most of those public information, are they not, the drawings?
Yeah. Absolutely not. Those are secure locations, even the. Even the, uh, blueprints on this building are not a public information.
So you, the, I mean, if you go to the building department, you can get drawings of. Residential, but that's not the case for.
Right, not.
For you. You know what I'm saying?
Yep. You can't, you can't fool you this.
And. I mean, I, I guess the main thing that I've heard is. On our, in our ballot thing was it's too expensive and the timeframe is too long and. I've had people recently that. We spend all this money on interest. We have, we're going to have different issues that we're going to have to take care of. I mean. Recently, now we're talking about. Three hundred thousand dollars to clean up trees, law ropes and. Electrical lines down, and we don't know what the future is, so I hate to. Take out a bond and handcuff what we can do in the future, layoffs, I mean, there's, there's a lot of issues. That's, that's all I got to say.
Thanks, Chris.
Jeremy, if we were to move forward with the architectural. Rendering. Can we set that up as? Um, like phases and then either in phases or full construction? And that obviously the building is going to be the same, whether we do it in phases or we do it in, um, all at once. But could they, could they do that? And I know, you know, you're not an architect, I understand. But could they let, build the, fit, do the architectural drawings so you could do it e- either way you wanted?
Yes, you can, you can do designs as phases. Um, and, and I want to make this clear. Don't hire an architect if this board is intent on building something. If, if the direction of this board is fix what we've got and just keep doing what we're doing. Don't spend that money. But, um. If your intent is to ship out our inmates, we have to build a holding facility of some sort. If, um. Your intent is to build a jail or to build sheriff's offices or whatever it is. We will need to. We will need to keep moving that forward. And, um, to move it forward will, will be a design.
Good. Um. Okay, right, we're closer than we've ever been before.
That depends, we're, we're done, no one.
Yes, yes. We had, we had, we sat here, I think it was in February and, and, and it. I think we all agreed that something you, you done. Uh, we disagreed, respectfully disagreed on how to pay for it, right? Totally understand, and that's why we're here tonight. And, and that was my, frankly, that was my concern. I don't know if I'm entirely shocked that we're here. Uh, you know, uh. I was desperately looking to try to figure out how can we get all five of us to agree. Uh, and, and it's, it's a big lift, usually. Um, because if we didn't all agree, then, then. There was potential ramifications for that. And that's what we're, that's what we're faced with today. Um. I, I'm, I'm. It, it's not about us deciding to build, I mean, if, if this goes on the ballot. Then the people, as the twenty five, twenty five. Then, then the people obviously would decide.
Can you guys speak up, please?
Absolutely, thank you very much, yeah. So, um, uh, then the people obviously would decide if it was this twenty, Jeremy, you stop me if I'm wrong on any of this, okay? There's twenty five year, twenty five.
I know, yeah.
Yeah, um, um, people would decide that. And, and so we could hire an architect, spend a million dollars, and then it gets voted down. That, that's, you know, that's, that's what worries me about, about talking about. Um, about hiring an architect. Um.
Can I?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Right there. If we do, and, and like I said, not architect. But if we did a phase thing and they did turn the millage down, or not millage, sorry. Allowing us to borrow money with no additional taxes. Then we should, we could use that drawing still to build. Just the jail or whatever we needed to do and have it in that ramification of less years. And it's going to be more of a cost in the long run. But we could still use that architectural drawing to build what we need to build. Um, unless, unless the board is dead set against doing anything at all. That money of the architect's money is not wasted money, no matter what happens. If we're dead set that we're not going to do anything at all, and we're just going to sit here and be bumps on the log, then that's a waste of money. Other than that, it is truly not a waste of money to move forward with the architectural drawings. Sorry, Bill.
No.
There was, I, it was right on that spot.
I could call a lot worse than bump on a rock, so that's not bad at all. Um, um, but. So, no, I appreciate it, Terry. I, I have been a vocal proponent of this for. Oh, I'd say fifteen, twenty years, long before I was ever here.
Yep.
Um, um. I, I took some swings and it hasn't worked out the way I hoped it was going to work out. So that's all I'm saying is, I, I feel like. I, I'm just feeling like step, you know, again. And this is Bill talk, the guy who wants to get this done is feel like I need to step back here and go, what, what am I doing? Because, because, um, um. And I do have a big fear. That if this goes on the ballot, I think you mentioned this, Jason, if this goes on the ballot and goes down again, we're done. I mean, we're done. And so even putting this on the ballot, and, and I'm not risk averse. But even putting this on the ballot at this point, there is a, there, there's a giant risk.
There is.
Um, and so. Cheers.
Yeah, on that. I, I think I expressed before that I thought it was going to go down, I mean, it. It's kind of my district, it went down pretty big in my district, but, uh. Jeremy, is there a way to move forward on this? Without putting up a bond and out, without having an election? Last year, we put two million extra when we did budget. Two million extra to the one point eight. Almost two million extra to our building fund. I looked at the budget, I don't see any reason where we couldn't put three or three and a half this year. We made some cuts and some. Um. Reallocations, um. Last meeting, I mean, we, we've got a lot of. Department heads and electeds that. Are willing to make some sacrifices and then cut some things to. Put some extra money towards this, so I guess my question is. I don't really like the idea of putting it on the ballot and having it. Then we're dead. I, I, I do think we need to do something. So. The question is. Is there a path forward to do it without issuing a bond and having to have an election?
There. I mean, there's lots of paths forward here, um. It's. I can tell you, uh, some of what you were saying, that we ran the numbers, we cannot save enough. It, it, let's say that we take the next fifteen years to save, we cannot save enough to beat inflation and. Uh, period, I mean, we can't. Um, the. Having three million dollars extra this year. I don't know how we would have that without massive layoffs. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not just trying to dismiss that. The biggest expense to the county is, is its employees. Biggest percentage. That's tends to be the biggest way, other than not doing capital projects. But that's exactly how we got where we're at.
Yeah.
When, when you don't fix what you've got, it gets worse, and then it becomes a bigger and bigger snowballing problem. Um. So. Yes, there's, there are other options, and, and I tried to lay some of them out here, but. Um, let's say that you want to go with phased, or I'm just going to pick E, not, not because it has a lot of support, just going to say pick E. Um, you go with the sheriff's offices, you go, you build everything but the jail pod, or. We're spitballing here, but we we would say that that's a little over half. Uh of the total project. The downside, of course, is you're not fixing the biggest problem, which is the jail. But you're creating a holding facility, you phase in the project, it's. Significantly different enough from what you already passed. If there's enough immunity support, you don't feel like. We're gonna run into something, that's a phase one. Um you will have to either continue fixing the jail. Um with the concept of we're probably going to have to ship some inmates out. That's just one possibility, that does not lead you to a um necessarily to a vote of the public. You can always ask the public whatever you want. But you could use the same mechanism to do a phased design if it's significantly enough different. Either in cost or project scope.
Um I'm gonna uh take delivery, I think the bylaws allow me to invite the sheriff to uh or ask the sheriff at least since he's here. If he has any comments.
Good evening, how we doing? Um thank you guys, uh you guys did your constitutional right, fantastic, and good, uh did a lot of work. So um as everybody knows, we need this facility. You, some folks in this uh in in this room get rid of my jail. I've had people walk out of the jail and say, oh, my gosh. We do need, I do. I need a place for my J A sergeant or excuse my corporal back there. I need a safe environment. Whatever we decide here, we need to, somebody said in a crowd, we need all come together. And we need to do this. As citizens of Antrim County, not me as sheriff, I pay taxes here as well. Whatever we come to tonight, I. Does go to the ballot, do we just build it, uh try to come together with with a certain amount, as Mr. Scott said. Can't come up with a complete number at this point. Yeah, sure, we came up with three, three, four, what, five million dollars. Is that an exact amount? I can't actually. But right now, this jail is not in compliance. Some of you have walked through it. Commissioner Schola, you've been through there. Know most of the commissioners. We most of the public. And and I appreciate everybody going through there and taking the time to look at the building that taxpayers built. But uh I obviously I can't make a decision for the board. Um but uh just tell you right now, whatever we decide. We need this jail, whether it's. Some people, some someone made a comment about. Why don't we just build the jail of salt in phases? Okay. I understand. Certain extent, um. Now I got other, I got another building that has evidence. We got another building that's got my options. Yeah, and then I got my jail. While paying all this money for three different places. Is that, I don't know, I guess I don't have the interest.
Alright, question. Just would you mind taking if there's any questions coming from the board?
I really don't have a question, but there was, I didn't get your last name, Kevin came up and spoke. About the Public Safety Center and you know. Getting quality employees, I mean, we have turnover, we have, you know, and it's. And like you said, quality employees, you you attract with. And it's not just safe, it's it's. There's so, it's not just building a jail to house inmates. There's so much more to it, there's the safety aspect, there's getting quality people to come in to stay, people to stay. I know some of you guys have been here. Sheriff or not sheriff. Mister Knight back there and Miss Knight, uh been here for a long time. Uh. But those are homegrown people, you know, that I went to school with. And we stayed here. But not everybody just stays here, we have to get people to come here. And when you walk through that jail, I guarantee you that some of them are going, holy, what did I agree to? Um and. It's, it's, we have, it's a lot of money. But. And. I think we we get too. Caught up in that number and I understand it's a big number and I know it's a lot of money, I don't take it lightly. If anybody, if you know me, you know, I don't take these things lightly. You can ask my wife, I'll sit up all night wondering if I said something stupid tonight, so um. Because I care. And. But you have to understand it's the big picture, people zoning in on that number. And when you take a step back like we should be doing as commissioners. And constituents and the sheriff and everybody else, you have to see the big picture. Not just this number right here, you've got to see everything that is involved in it. Okay, we spent most money on employees, what's our next one? Safety, right, probably?
Well, yeah, the sheriff's office, the the majority.
And I mean. How many offices are you down right now?
Uh we're down six right.
Okay, there we go. Yes, but when are they gonna be done? Okay. I know, but. We have that going for us, but at the same token, it's not an easy profession, it's, you know. People, you know, you don't get any respect here, you know, police officers. You know, teachers, there's a few others. That you don't get paid enough for what you do. And then you gotta come work in a place like this. You gotta think of it that way. Numbers are numbers, I know it's a big number, but. You see the big pic, you gotta look at the big picture, that's what I'm getting at, and and when you see the big picture, I know we have a long way to go. Cause I've been, just like the the marijuana money I wanted. So we can have programs. Because I think when I gotta stop by, I've been busy, we're gonna sit down, I wanna know the the receipt of wisdom. Said that right, hopefully, it's it's been a long day, close enough. Um you know, how many guys keep coming back? We see all the time. And when, when we can offer them that help. Which I know we wanna do. Sherry doesn't have to see the same guy every other week. Or you or your officers. You know. And that's, that's the big thing, how many do you have in the jail right now? How many people? I mean.
Say one more thing here uh for the board. Um even uh the facility that you guys put us in, the health department. I believe some people have taken a tour of that. Put twenty-three people in a building like this. Ran it, not there all at the same time. I I I got a detective sergeant that's basically in that closet. He's working on a homicide, he's working on a chain of V Ds or breaking and entering. We have boards up here for us. Commissioner Schola, you know what I'm talking about, we're looking at the different areas, things are. You can't put it out in the hallway, things have to take over. And even with this new space we have, you've had people, you got somebody out that's coming in for our office. You bring him in, give him a tour. They did it with the same, the other building. I appreciate the folks wanting to come together, fantastic.
And then I think us as a community and a board can do better. You know what I mean? Did, we gotta look at the big picture. And we're not gonna be a two-year jail. Or two-year prison. Okay, I didn't. Thank you. I think that's it for a minute.
I I hope everyone's patient with me, this is a big, I mean, I I'm fine discussing this, okay? I mean, this is a big.
We need to do this.
Okay.
You know, I don't speak very often, when I've run out of breath, it's uh. Must be important to you, so.
Uh but uh but we'll let the sheriff sit down unless there's a question for the sheriff. Thank you, Kevin, thank you. Um and and I will again, take the opportunity, I think the chairperson has it right, and you don't have to, Sherry uh. The jail minister, Sherry Knight is uh with us as well, uh is there any comments you wanna make? Okay, thank you. Other comments? Any comments for, um this this was on our agenda as a discussion, there's no action item on here. Um so this was a um obviously discussion point. Um Jeremy, what uh you know, Terry?
Can I? Um I would like to ask that on our May first, the first meeting in May. That we have information together and. Uh cost and such for hiring a uh engineer, uh architectural firm to. Start moving forward with understanding what we need for square footage for a public safety center.
I agree.
I guess I think that takes a. Does that need a consensus to do that, Jeremy, or?
I mean, I can bring back whatever information I can, it's gonna be. Fairly limited and. But I I will try to talk with architects to get an a better idea what that cost would look like.
That's I think is our next step forward is to get something moving, so.
And that would be positive. Moving forward.
Yeah, positive. Well, whatever, the the I don't, I don't wanna move the sport in the wrong direction, uh but. Uh moving is always preferable to standing still when you got a trouble.
Is there any of these options? And 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 again, it's okay, is there any of these options that tonight we can all agree, like, get rid of that? It's out of here? Or no?
For me, it's repair the jail, the current one. I mean.
Well, I'm I'm just trying to, I'm trying to simplify this for for Jeremy to take some things off, if there is, and if there's not, that's that's perfectly fine.
Well, I would, I would think that, and we talked about that a little bit ago, that. When he talks to an architect. And get something started or discussion on it. To verify that we can do it, either A, program A would be. Build the complete jail, which is what needs to be done, or B. How do we split that up so we can build it in um phases? And have the same drawing for both. To understand, you know, if we're gonna do something, we can say, okay, construction management company, we would like to do. A, C, and B. Or we would like to do the whole thing. Give us, give us figures, that way we have a drawing. We know what our square footage is, we can address the square footage, Jeremy did that on other stuff. He'll go through it and say, well, you know, we can take out. Fifty square feet here or whatever, because we don't need that. At this point, we don't have any of that. So it would be, it would be, the only thing that it would be. Um spending money on that we're not gonna need is if the board is dead set against building anything at all. If the the board's dead set against building anything at all, then that's just a waste of time and effort, but if we're gonna move forward. And end up building something. I think the next step we have to have is to have a architect do us a drawing, so we got something concrete to work with.
It's worth, I mean, I, as everybody knows, I mean, I'm I'm opposed to B. I mean, I've I've said that repeatedly, I mean, that that uh uh like again, I I can't, I can't continue to throw.
I'm I'm a hundred percent on board with you.
But um.
I don't want, I want, again, any, I I mean, any, any thoughts on that, Ray or Jairus, I mean. Um no?
I mean, I've, I've been quiet, uh and I'll just say this, this is, this is, you know, where I'm coming from, uh. We're, we're living in very interesting times right now with um, I'm talking about. Our finances as as a nation, alright? I mean, yesterday, I think gold hit thirty-three hundred dollars an ounce. Um our government for as long as I can remember has been living. Um hasn't been living within their means, alright? We have been. Borrowing, and I'm not talking about Antrim County, okay, I'm just talking about, talking about our country, alright? I don't know how these things are gonna turn out, I really don't. This whole thing scares me. It 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 really does scare me, the price of it, you know? Because. For twenty-five, it's it's twenty-five, up to twenty-five years. We're gonna have this anchor around our neck. And 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 I'm and I'm saying for the entire county, you know, I mean. This is our citizens um with their property taxes, we have, we have an issue, I I'm. Hopefully, I'm looking forward to uh Leslie Meyer speaking uh the May first meeting. Um you know, I've heard a lot from um Six Mile residents, Six Mile Lake residents. I'm just saying, it it scares me to death, I understand, and I I'm not opposed to a new facility, I'm not, you know? I don't know how we get the number down. I really don't, but I think that we have to try to figure out a way of getting that that price down. Because like I said, I, you know, I have no idea what's gonna happen and, you know, and the economy, and I don't, none of us do. They they don't, you know what I'm saying? I just heard, and whether it's true or not, the last time that gold prices actually got to that. That that amount, it was like the Great Recession, you know? And so. And I, you know, and I'm, I I hear about kicking the can down the road. But I am telling you right now, I mean, with the new administration, and I have no idea what's going on, I really don't. But. If we s- i- if we commit to this and it's fifty million dollars. And we can't do anything else in the county, that's that's unacceptable, it is, cause I mean, we just had. A once in a lifetime, you know, ice storm that happened, um thank, thank the Lord. That it was just the east part of Antrim County, it wasn't our entire county. But um. And all, and I mean, former law enforcement, I appreciate, you know, uh Sheriff Hope. Um and I I, you know, and I understand, I mean, that that facility is, it it's old, I I understand that, I get it, it's not ideal. I mean, I'm I'm blown away that is, you know, I mean. That it's not, you know, I mean, it's it's a solid found, it's a solid foundation, um it's not ideal and all that kind of stuff, but. And then also too. You know, when the voters uh rejected the the millage in November and it was two hundred and twenty-three votes. And then we came back in February. I just saw it was way too early, I really did, you know, um. And. I mean, like I said, I, you know, when I. When I got elected, it was, it was trying to be a good steward of tax dollars. And this price is, I I mean, it's just crazy, it it's a, it's a crazy number. And I'm not saying we don't need this facility, I'm not saying we don't need the sheriff's uh the sheriff's uh department, um you know, dispatch. I'm just saying, it's, it it really, really does scare me, you know, and. I don't know, I and and like I said, I'm I'm about it, I wish. This is my personal opinion, I wish we could kind of put it off until the beginning of next year, let's see where the economy is, let's see what's going on. Um because God forbid, you know, if things go really, really wayward and we're already in this. It's, like I said, that that's, that's where I'm at right now, I mean, if. I don't know, if it's. Uh two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen before COVID. No problem at all, you know what I'm saying? But let's be, I'm, we're gonna be totally honest, I mean, COVID, we still have never recovered the COVID. We haven't, you know what I'm saying? We're still suffering from the effects of COVID. Now, I'm not saying the disease itself, but how it destroyed our economy. We did stuff that we should have just, I mean, neither here nor there. But. We just should have, I mean, and we're still, we're still at that point. We're still having, you know, um. We saw it recovered from that, and so this price tag is, it's a huge price tag for our community. And then also too, if I'm, you know, I mean, District Five, my district. It's not like, you know, District One or. You know, District Three or whatever, I mean, we have people that they just. You know, the paycheck to paycheck, you know, and struggling. And so. You know, that's my concern, I I mean, I really. I just, I wish we could take a little bit of step back, let's see what happens. You know. This year and in January, I I'm all about it, if if everything is. You know, I mean, if we're on the. Talking about the country because of the, however the country goes, the county, the county is gonna go. You know, I mean, we're already seeing, you know, cutbacks, we just. I mean, we're we're gonna discuss it, you know, the veterans are fair, they're they're not getting as much money, the health department, they they made some cuts. Everybody's making cuts. It's just, it's a really challenging time. Um for a county and and you know, there's, it just, there's a lot of uncertainty. Know that this has been going on for a long time and I'm just thinking. Why can't we just kind of like pause? Stop, see where we're at in January, and if everything's great in January, let's, 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 you know, make some. Responsible decisions and let's go forward. That, I mean, like I said, I I I do. That, I mean, like I said, I I I do believe we need a facility. But um, just the the uncertainty of the financial, you know, the financial situation. That, you know, as a nation we're facing, I just think it's it's crazy. It really, really is, you know, um. Sorry, that's my thoughts.
Thanks, Bill. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Jeremy, if we sent out, if we had an architect draw this, we probably wouldn't see it until. January or February, probably at the very earliest, would we? And you're gonna be May now.
Right, uh, but only if you had a direction. I mean, uh, ju- just to be clear. Just hiring an architect without some kind of direction that this board is intending. Is not what I'm advising. There, there has to be some. Reason to hire the architect. There has to be some kind of direction, whether it's. Holding phased jail only. Whatever it is. We're going to need that.
That would give you your, your timeframe that you're, but then we'd have something concrete to make a decision on.
We know more. We can see where we're at.
Thanks, Bill.
Absolutely, no, absolutely.
No, I, makes it, no matter what, we we need these, you know, we need these. Matter of where, when, when or where we decide to, what we decide to do, so.
No, it's like I said. These are, I mean, they're tough conversations. I'm glad that we're having it. Um, and like I said, it's, and I I'm. Being honest, if it was, if it was two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, when everything was going in the right direction. Um, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't even be questioning it, but I, I'm just, I'm very concerned, very concerned with financial situation.
Uh, yes, just a little comment. You wouldn't want to have been on those boards. There's nine of us and nobody could agree on what color the sky was.
Yeah, I just listening to Ray, um. I think I mentioned before that the mental health board had been. Uh, has property bought and was moving forward with the building in Calcasca. And uh. We got an estimate of what it was gonna cost and. With the funding and the uncertain times, it's on pause right now, so. Um, it would have served people from Antrim and Calcasca County, um. But. We think that we can make do with what we have for right now, and the interest. That was what really, it really came down to was the interest is a killer. Just like we're seeing on this project.
I, do we, do we agree that this is not something that's gonna be going on the ballot in August? Do we agree on that? Cause I haven't heard anybody, I haven't heard anybody pounding the table for that.
I I, the sooner the better, because all it's doing is it's just costing us more money every day.
Okay, I I didn't, I, again, I was just trying to find something to, uh.
Yeah, I was just. We need to move anything forward. The architect is the only, is the next logical step. And then, um, and it's gonna take work to get. The information out, which I'm sure that our admin will be able to do, to get the. The the ballot language correct and get people to understand what we got and. We're gonna need to step up to the plate and do it what we did the last time, Bill.
But that's not gonna happen by the next meeting. And and we would have to, I mean, this has been something in the August ballot, would have to be with the next meeting, correct, Chairman?
Yeah, the, if you were to put it on the August ballot, you would have to prove language at the next meeting in order to make the deadline.
So, so that's my point is, I, you know, that that's my point is, I just don't even know if that's Jason.
So, so August, and then I hear November. So when's the next one after that, that we can do it?
May.
May. Yeah. Okay. I'm just, you know, that's where I'm at. I mean, we gotta.
And and we, sorry, and we wouldn't be. If it was to fail, we would not be dead in the water. We would have to go back. Regroup what we've got, figure out a different plan of attack, and we can put it back on the ballot again. They do that with schools. They do that with everything else. It's not one and done. So that saying of. If it failed in August, we're dead. We're not. We have to figure out another alternative. And take that back to the taxpayers. So. Um, we just need to. Can I get, my feeling is we need to continue to move forward or. Make the decision that we're gonna do nothing at all. That's basically the decision that we need to make.
After this discussion, I'm I'm just afraid that without, you know. Without architectural drawings and a a little more firm of a number and a a little more of a plan. I I don't think it will pass. Um, do I want, am I gonna? You know, go out and beat the drum? Yeah, but. I think people are are wanting a little more of a plan, maybe. I don't know. So, yeah, I mean. I'm still open till Aug- to August, but. Um, in all reality, if we want to get those. Those plans and everything else and have a little firm number, it might be a little longer. And. I don't like that idea, but same token, I'm realist, you know? I understand what people do and don't want and what we need to do, so. Give us the best. You know, I I keep saying set a precedent also, you know, that we, we, we appreciate. Our citizens and we appreciate our employees. And we want to give our citizens help that need help. And. You know, looking at the big picture again, that's what we have to do as everybody, you know? We just gotta get something done. And I I think we had better discussion today than we we've had. Um, like I said, in those nine commissioner meetings, man on man. You could have, you know. Said the sky was blue, and by the time you got down to the end of it, it was nighttime, and it was a morning meeting. No, I mean, it was. Nobody could agree on a dang thing. And then. They would, I don't even know, I can't even explain it because it was horrible.
I, um.
I used to have a lot of hair until that happened. I mean, that's, that's.
I I was just, I was, again, I was just trying to find something that we could walk out of here tonight. Wouldn't say, yeah, we're all in agree with not putting this on the August ballot. So, but that's fine. Um, uh, uh. Terry has asked Jeremy to put something together. Um, I, I, um. Obviously, um, that's fine. Anything else? Anyone, uh?
Let's get something together for, to discuss that and have a uh motion item or an action item. To put it on the August ballot, and then we can decide then if we're going to. But until you have a uh agenda item that to move it forward. It's pretty hard to bring it up and vote on it because you need to have it on the agenda as an action item, so. I would think.
That's fine. Jeremy, put that, you'll put that on the agenda as well. Um, that's fine, uh, to put it on the ballot in uh, in August. Um, I'll also, um, then I'll also ask, uh, they put together a uh, a uh. Close motion, a resolution, whatever is necessary for uh, for us to withdraw the resolution we did in February. Uh, the twenty-five, twenty-five. Is that possible as well?
Do we have to do that?
No, we don't have to do that. It's done.
I asked Jeremy a question.
You want just a motion?
Thank you. Yeah, chairs.
I just don't, I I agree with Jason. I think August is too soon. I think. That's one of the reasons that it went. That we're in the situation we're in is because sixty days after the voter said no, we voted yes. And that didn't sit well. It's. You gotta have more community input and. And more of a plan like Jason said.
Thanks, Jer. I'm sorry. Real quick, I, I want to make sure when my JA with the hot water heater that went out, twenty thousand dollars. We have forty thousand dollars. So, we'll make sure that something else happens. We could come back and do an amendment. Like, things are just starting to crash, so I. Just want to make sure that's, that everybody understands that. I mean, we just, money, money, money.
Thank you. And uh, anything else for uh Jeremy to put on his list for things to put together for the next meeting? Okay, obviously you've got time yet, too. I mean, obviously, the genetic committee meets next week, so feel free to communicate with. Anything else on this discussion matter?
Good job.
Okay, thanks very much, guys.
Alright, let me find one.
For the member's subscription. Uh, yes, that's.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mike, you're here still. How are you tonight? Good. Uh, I'm looking for a motion. This is a gen item uh from Sergeant Gang. Um, uh, looking for a motion to authorize the board chair to sign the member subscriber agreement with Michigan Public Safety Communications System.
So moved.
I'll support.
It moved and supported. Any discussion or questions for Mike?
Guys, time to come up. I just got a comment. I gotta, wanna come up real quick? This is just, this is just a contract to go. Every time I see these things. I just go back to, we bought, we kept buying radios and radios and radios. So thank you for just having. Oh, to something because uh. How many sets of radios do we have? I I think we're good for a while, I hope.
Any other questions, any questions, Mike?
No.
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate it. Okay, has it been uh moved a second? Thanks for discussion. I was prepared, please say aye. Well, I moved on to Barnes Park, uh Campground Road, award. Um, looking for a motion uh to accept the bid for Barnes Park Campground. Road from Team Elmers authorized expenditure of two hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and seventy. Two dollars and twenty-five cents and authorized the chair to sign a contract for services.
I'll make the motion.
Move by Jason, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Terry's second discussion.
Uh, that, just so people know, the. Road at the campground is not. Ashwell, it's dirt and they put tar and chip over it. Who knows how many years ago, but with the advent of bigger or or bigger R- RVs and all that. It's just flat tore it up and it's time to fix it. And it was amazing. Elmers was actually. That much less than the other ones, which is very unusual. They do a great job, so.
They do good, man.
Okay, uh, all of them, please say aye. Uh, Veterans Affairs, uh, MBAA Grant Funding Reallocation. Uh, submitted by Brandon, organ director of uh our local BA, uh, motion to, looking for a motion to approve a budget amendment reducing the Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency. MBAA Grant Funds by twelve thousand one hundred and four dollars. Original award amount of sixty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty. New grant allocation for Antrim County, fifty-six. Thousand twenty-six dollars. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make, I'll make it.
I'll second.
Uh, moved to second as Brandon is here with us. Any questions that you have for Brandon?
Thanks, man.
Anything, Brandon, you'd like to say? You don't have to. Okay, been moving second, for discussion.
I believe it.
Right, thank you, Brandon. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, okay, closed session bargaining, uh, uh, unit, unit negotiations. Meeting acts two sixty-seven, nineteen seventy-six, fifteen two sixty-eight, closed session. Listenable purposes, section eight C allows closed sessions for strategy and negotiation. Questions selected with the negotiation or collective bargaining agreement, if either negotiating party requests a closed hearing, please consider filing motion. Looking for a motion to go into closed session, discuss ongoing negotiations, issues with man collective party.
I'll make that motion.
No, second.
Second, any discussion? All those there, please say aye. Wanna pose? Thank you, folks. I'm sorry. I don't know how long this is gonna take us. Hopefully not too long, but um, I don't have a definitive time, so, thank you.
You gotta get through the rest of this.
That's right. That's right, too. Yeah.
Got a call.
Yeah. Okay, now this end.
Nope. So you, no, and I don't understand the close session one, because you can't make a motion in close session.
Is, is I know.
But no, you don't have to do anything. You can just bring it to by the chair to open.
Yeah.
Back and.
Cause I knew this was gonna come up today.
I don't know how they can do that.
No, man. Is this, we're in a closed session today. Yeah. It's not against our motion and closed session. And took it in the spice.
Listen, the stupid thing that I say, look at the.
We can't make.
Make a motion in close session. That's, that's a contradiction.
We had no.
You're in the chair because you can make that decision. Okay, come on, Jeremy. We got ready to. All the way to Jeremy's. We needed that.
Yeah.
It's just right now, you.
Yeah. Okay, you're good. Alright. Alright, we're back in session and we are to the county administrators report. Is there any questions for Jeremy's?
I do have good news uh, as far as the courts are concerned. We've gotten a number of um. Letters and resolutions of support lately. All the judges. Even Grand Traverse County has now uh, passed a resolution just this week to um. To support this, so that's very encouraging.
Awesome. Uh, Jeremy, uh, uh, under eleven, um, you're just saying, you know, Commissioner and I'm just intending this to be offered to other folks. Um, so, um, are you offering those other folks right now? Are we, are we uh, is there any other commissioners that would like to go to Northern Lakes Economic Alliance? Okay, can this I say, Terry?
Okay.
Anybody else?
Okay. Yep, there'll be.
Offered to somebody else.
First.
Yeah. Um. Yeah.
And um. Number four. Uh, there is a materials management. Plan. On the twenty-fourth at two o'clock. Correct? Uh.
Oh, yeah, we do have a. We do have a MMP. The last one was canceled. Well. Last one was ineffective because not enough people showed up. It's difficult to get a. A forum when you gotta get eleven. Uh, member board together, but um. Uh, we did get an extension from the state, uh, so. Yeah, here, here's another try.
It's funny you said one quarter one time.
Yes.
I mean, on, on number three on the ice storm. I've had some people that have asked me. We weren't declared an emergency in Antrim County and. I don't think, can you just speak to that briefly? Cause sure. I know, I know a majority of our townships were not, but some of them were hit pretty hard, so.
Yep. So um, there's actually a criteria, a level that you need to meet before you're supposed to call for an emergency. Um, which really means that we've expended all of our resources. It's not that people weren't in a bad situation. It's. Statements say that Antrim County can't provide. Um, the fire fighters, the road commission can't provide to, to serve the public. Um, we weren't there. But uh, we reached a point where, where it looked like we were going to get there. And that's the point where we declared emergency was it'd be grossly inappropriate to declare. An emergency when you're not to that. Um. And uh, from me, from here. Um, uh, there's more discussion about FEMA coming in and a- again, there's, there's certain levels that you're supposed to follow. Generally speaking, the state. Has not been following those, but we're doing our best to work with them and to, to um, do this the right way and, and. Get whatever help we can.
Cause we did declare.
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
We didn't immediately, but we.
Then the, then the governor did add us, add Antrim County to that, too?
Yes, right, right after we. Rootfully deferred.
Yep. Uh, other questions for Jeremy?
Right, uh, uh, number thirteen, is there any more information as far as uh, GTI is concerned? Um. I see that they're, they might go in front of the, the health department or health board.
Yeah, I, I, the, well, not the health board, the CMH board, um. All I could do is encourage that our member on the CMH board to. To uh, push for that. Um, these are two external organizations. I, I, I. They each have a very different perspective. I don't want to get into the arguments of two groups. But um. If there's any possibility that even though it doesn't involve us directly, that I can assist that, I will. I'm not sure how I can at this moment, but um, as Commissioner Hepburn asked last time, put it on there just to keep it in. Fresh in minds and. Um, like I said, uh, uh, I advised GTI that I would ask our representative. But to make sure that I'll walk with the same.
Yeah. It, they're, they're not the only one that are really hurt and. With our mental health board where we're at, we're hurting too. So how do we? I think part of it is the whole Medicaid thing and how do we get the folks that are part of GTI? To get, to be able to get some money for Medicaid to help and. It's a paperwork nightmare for GTI and for other independent contractors and. What else to say?
How do, how do you get on the, how did, how did, have they, have they, have they talked to you, Jer? So they, have GTI come and talk to you or how do they get on your agenda or how does that work?
They haven't talked to me. What? I, I, I've emailed with people from there.
Yeah.
Um. Again, it's similar to ours. The board chair sets the agenda, so. I, I haven't specifically had a conversation with him regarding that, and I guess I probably should.
I just say, yeah, I don't understand how it works. I was just wondering if they had uh. They had talked to. And the only other thing that sticks in my mind and Ray will correct me if I'm getting this incorrect was that. There was, I thought, I came out of the meeting with GTI and they were saying that. The, the, the mental health, which I know is not us in Grand Traverse County, the services Grand Traverse, because GTI is also in Grand Traverse. That GTI is receiving more reimbursement from that mental health authority or board than they are from, from this one. You have two different boards. I'm sure they can do whatever they want, but I did find that kind of ironic that, that um. You know, that, that. Folks in Traverse City are being compensated more than folks in Madison.
And we all know that Traverse City has a boatload more money than what.
Fair.
Any of our small counties that are part of mental health have, so that may be why. I don't know.
I'll keep bugging you. We'll leave it on the agenda, please, Jeremy.
I'll, I'll leave it on there.
On it, so I can remember. That's all. Thank you. Anything else? Anything regards to the reports that are included in Jer's, in Jeremy's reports? Uh, uh, Brad?
Um, yeah, so I mean, report us, it's um. The, the only other thing to remind is the um, the capital improvement plan. Um, I have that scheduled for May twenty-eighth. Um, for the, the CIB meeting. Uh, I think I mentioned it a couple of meetings ago, but forgot to mention the last one, but yeah.
How are, how are you guys on that May twenty-eight date?
I mean, if we can. If. Maybe, I mean, if, if you were wanting to, to move it, I mean, we can. Yeah, I, I can't go any closer as I only give myself a week to review it. But if you want it in June, we can do that.
Okay, yeah. It's a Wednesday, looks like so.
Yeah, I, I think it's maybe where you're looking at is it's right after.
Right after. Royal Day. Royal Day, it's a royal day week.
Um, so, so if, if there is a, a desire to change it, I mean. Uh, I'm open, I. I work here. Um.
So. What do you, what do we all like to do? You can, twenty-eight's good with everybody?
Yeah. Whatever you want.
Okay. David, yeah, alright. Thank you, Brad. Anything else?
Yep.
Uh. Sheriff, anything else you'd like to add tonight?
Yeah. So I, I wanna make, uh, make a point to shout out.
Thanks.
Um. To uh, Marty Nuck. Also uh, calling a Pleasant Valley Custom Home, Superior Valera. Said, because of Marty, and we appreciate him. He actually bought this to the sheriff's offices. And uh, I, I thought it was. Um, we have five of these now, a one, one in each facility. So. In the last year, this has saved four lives in our community. He has, we have deputies that were right there on scene along with Chief Rollander, who obviously is our local fireman and he does a great job in our community. But he was there as well. He's saying safe lives. I, I have used these for years. I have not had a save. I'm I am a true believer. So big shout out to Marty Nuck. So that was fantastic. So I tried to get a hold of him and I think it was a little late on the, the phone call and I think he probably went home, be a distant. So just want to make sure everybody knew that Marty brought that to us and I thought it was weird. So he's very big on public, firemen, EMS. So I want to talk about something real quick. I come up here and I tell you guys about all these people we've arrested for drug crimes. So just in the last week and a half, this gives you a kind of highlight of what we dealt with. We have confiscated two hundred forty-three point six grams of crystal meth just in a week and a half. You gotta see this Florida, it's a lot bigger than this. So seven point six grams of crack cocaine. That was in our county that we got out of vehicles. Obviously we've had CI's. We got, we got a fantastic undercover detective that works for us. And I think all of you have met him at one point or another. And he's extremely passionate. So as my soft manager. Here in the drug world, I mean, we may not hear it all, get rid of it out of our county. We can sure make it, one heck of an inconvenience. That's all I got to say. So appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Any other comments, Jason?
Just on the, on Matthews, the emergency service coordinator, he did, he was all over the place. Obviously he answered phone calls, you know, I had emails and phone calls to me. And I said, I would give him a call and he answered right away. And I was able to text with people and let them know information they needed, especially up in Lakes to the north. It was hit and miss for a lot of people. A few people sent me a message on Facebook Messenger that I'm not friends with, but you know, I was able to at least communicate with him through that. And I think he answered, you know, he, I called, left a message. And I hadn't heard anything and I got a few more. And then I, I decided just to text him. And he said, I got your message. I said, he answered my question. I said, he said, I'll call you in a little while. And I said, you're busy. No need to call me. You answered my questions. And I was able to relay them through messages and, and things. But you know, it's another thankless job. That guy was working a lot and I think he's doing a great job. So kudos to him.
Thanks.
I just wanna say, agree with Jason. I mean, Matthew did a phenomenal job. I heard from him, I, on a nightly basis. It was, it was a very I don't think he got very much sleep, you know, but we're, we're, we're very fortunate to have him. So thank you, Matthew.
Yeah, somebody who cares like that. It's hard to come by.
Yep.
Public comment again. That.
I appreciate the process. Appreciate the discussion. Thank you, the board commissioners, please. I'm a constituent and I support what the board's action was on February forty-sixth. And so I want to, you know, I just want to, I won't say that. There's been focus this evening on folks that don't necessarily support what, you know, what you all did. I think it's, I would respectfully suggest that there are many others like me who support your, your action on the, you know, on the sixth, but everything. So we just, I will just request that you keep that. Thank you.
Thanks, you, Dwayne. And I sat down, I met Dwayne. So thank you very much.
Property taxes are out of control. We have a school in Central Lake asking for a fifteen million dollar millage for thirty years. I'm gonna be dead in less than five years. You guys, you put this back on the ballot. That's more money. My husband and I are on a fixed income. I cannot afford all these property taxes. We cannot figure out how these, when Sherry stood up here and said that one house on Torch Lake, there was a forty thousand dollar increase in their property tax. One house. This county is rich with people on Torch Lake that maybe they can afford those property taxes. I can't afford it. Thirty years is ridiculous. It's a ridiculous amount of money to ask or a ridiculous amount of time to ask for all this money. And you guys better consider just like Ray said, there's a lot of people and I'm one of them that cannot afford these constant millage requests, which is nothing more than tax increases and our property gets forfeited. Once we can't pay these, these taxes, I would ask you guys to not put this back on for vote because I want to have a summer. And I will spend my summer going out, talking to as many people as I can to defeat this. It's not any other reason than I'm sick of the property tax increases. And I would ask that you guys look at a different plan. You, why don't you build up? You've got a nice foundation, build up. There's room out back. One man I did not tonight, John, said you guys could look at that. So why don't you look at that? Build up. Good foundation. Add on. Not this exorbitant Taj Mahal of a jail. Thank you.
Thank you. You must come.
I said I was gonna come here and just learn. So so a couple of things. If, if you want to hear some real stories, I'll tell you some stories outside of the committee. I worked at Dwayne Waters Hospital in Jackson State Prison for two years as a doctor. So I know what unsafe is. I can tell you about. But, but here's, here's my simple take on this. I've appreciated all the commissioners discussion. It's been very revealing to me. But you're playing poker with the wrong people. The people that are obstructing these issues are the same people. They can call themselves citizens for concern, whatever. It's the same people. So what I would suggest, because I thought I heard tonight that those people are not against the new center. They're just against maybe the cost of the center. So what I think makes sense to me is get unanimity amongst the commissioners that we need a, a new center. Put your, put your vote, yours on. Put your vote, Mr. Scott on it. And then get these people that signed this petition to state publicly that they are in favor of the center and put one of those two people with the sheriff on an ad hoc committee, give them a date to come up with a plan. And you probably could get the ballot going for August and you probably would pass. But these people need to declare themselves. Are they for a center? Are they just against the cost? My suspicion is just like the last person who talked, they're against the center. So declare yourself, folks. When I met the first person that was asking me to sign this, this this, this petition, I said, your leaders, who's behind this? Can't tell you. Why not? You're ashamed? Can't tell you. It's the same people that obstruct most things in Antrim County, folks. I'm not politically correct, but it's the same people. And putting it off till you see whether the economy is good or not. Mr. Scott, no disrespect meant. But if the economy goes south, you won't need twenty-nine rooms. You might need fifty. So putting it off is like preparing for a disastrous war by cutting your budget in defense. Okay? So I don't see putting it off makes sense. But I do agree, making it cost effective and getting everybody's buy-in makes sense. So these people that sign this commission want a, a new, a, a new center. Put them on the committee. Play their cards.
Thank you. Hey, what? John?
Well, I would since I get an estimate to see what you can do with these bones over here right now. Look at the county building. Is it acid loss? The old county building, where they did all that tucking. There's a lot of stuff on there that I'm familiar with, Brittany. And of course we have this building here where we have this side of that's around us. And you might as well put a, I saw a sunset of, a sunset of torchlight on the front of this building. So at least it looks better. Other than that, these terror in the passport. I, I understand that the county's shots is that, if that's true, then there's liability there. Because five key losses liability. And the CDC are extenuates, this is an extension of those, those HHS. They have to publish in the federal register. Are you familiar with the federal register? You're, you're in, in, in in the court system. We have seen from nineteen thirty-three. And, and the federal register was set up to, to control rogue agencies. And, and everybody, everything, the presidency, to go to the federal register and remember agencies. There are, I think, four hundred. And the, the presidency is executive branch. It's all alphabetical and they all have to file in the federal register. And then we have to better file the administrative procedure act of nineteen forty-six. And, and this this agency over here is giving shots and I can't even pay for it. There's a lot of liability because any shots that the children don't need because county leaders, medical doctors told them to school. I mean, it was a manmade type of funding. And the police people slipping these shots, the doctors are telling them they need shots and they don't need the shots to go to school. And they're full of toxicity. My sister has a website, childhoodshots.com. And she's been doing this for almost fifteen years. And these two gentlemen are out there and not stopping the shots from being happy. They're not telling these people that are at this health agency to tell the parents they don't need the shots. Instead they're giving shots to children with taxpayer dollars, if I understand, coming from the county. And I don't approve of that because the autism is rare. Just listen to RFK. He knows what he's talking about. He's coming at it slow. But his ingredients are glycerin, the liver, uh, who know, baby tissue, insect DNA, acetone, any of these cancer viruses. And when that Fauci shot, HIV was somewhere with three cancer viruses and Fauci's shot. But when he took it, you got, your health and justice has been compromised with, but so yeah, ready to go. Nothing to give them, taking those shots. So I, I feel that these two gentlemen shouldn't be providing a plan on this. He's probably, well, let him here. And he's, he's, they're saddled with a couple of shots because they don't have a reaction. Just like the other gentleman that we've done this by these shots that we're delivering.
Thanks, John. Thank you.
Appreciate all the good dialogue tonight. And I do respectfully I take exception to your comments.
Richard, you have to make sure to direct your comments to me. Okay.
I, I don't appreciate being characterized as anything less than a citizen of this county that cares a lot about the well-being of the county. We've been here for generations and we want to be here for healthy county for many generations to come. I think this dialogue is really good. I look forward to it continuing. And I would really ask you to move ahead at the next meeting where doing whatever you have to do. If there's still any confusion about it, you've got time to get that clarified. What the process is to avoid that election that will be contentious, it will be costly. We can avoid that. We can put our energies into productive discussion that will allow us to progress, I think, really a lot faster than waiting for an election. I appreciate the opportunity to be involved in the, the discussion. And we have open access to any of you. And I intend to continue to take that. Thanks again.
Thanks, Richard. Anyone else?
My name's Sue Leesner from Al Brattis Township, and I am here to declare that although I spent many days in the cold and wind collecting signatures from people, I didn't tell anyone that their taxes would go up. I only used literature that was from the Antrim County website. And I'm here to publicly declare that I am in favor of a new jail and always have been. I wouldn't have a problem. And I think it would have been nice if you did have some kind of general number on what it would have cost to refurbish the current jail. Nobody knows. Nobody has said. So you know, people can dream about that. But in no way did I or any of the people I worked with do this because we don't want a new jail for the sheriff, the deputies and our county. Thank you.
Thanks.
So I'll just, I'll just add my two cents, Richard, Sue. Dale Eschenberg again from Lena Township. When I was in, in addressing prospective voters in Antrim County, I first asked them, sir, are you an Antrim County voter? Ma'am, are you an Antrim County voter? That's the first thing I asked. If they weren't. I said, thank you. If they said they were Antrim County voter, then I asked if I could speak to them about the safety center. I asked if, if they knew about the latest, you know, activities related. Many of them would say yes, some would say no, some some would think they, they had all the details, but then when I had shown them the bond was going forward, they thought and we put that down and do what we said earlier. So, but I, I always approached them with what I felt was respect. And I was sincere. And I was, I believe I was being honest. I believe I was at integrity. And I still do. And I would, I would let them know that if we had this money in our pocket and we were ready to build a jail in the safety center, I wouldn't be here. I also told them that if it wasn't for the bond, the twenty-five million dollar bond for twenty-five years, I wouldn't be here right now. But because of that bond, it took it over the top for me. It was, it was two months. It was expounding. This is what I thought. And when I, when I talked to people, many of them were saying, well, what do you think you're gonna do about it? And, and I said, well, I'm hoping that we can have meetings. I'm hoping that we will have meetings with only two commissioners at a time. Because otherwise we have to have a public forum and get three minutes to talk. And I didn't want that. I wanted to sit in a room like this with for people that represent the town, the county administration, the county responsible leaders, as you both do. And I wanted three or four of us citizens from common sense. And I wanted to sit across from the daybook and have the finance director, county administrator, commissioners at a time and, and have all the experts in the room at the same time and brainstorm. How can we do this effectively, cost effectively? I wasn't against the deal. In, in our group, I voted not to do a petition. I sincerely did not want to do a petition. But because our group said in, in favor of it, I went along. And, and I did the best I could to support it in an integrable way. And, and
Thanks.
I'm not ashamed with anything I did out there. I'm proud of what I did because I've represented the county's voice.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments tonight?
Can I just clarify something? I'm not part of, I did not sign the petition and I did not circulate one petition. I want that clear. And it's not that I'm against the jail. I'm against my property tax. Want that clear, and it's not that I'm against the jail, I'm against my property.
All right, Joe, okay, all right, thank you. Uh, well, thank you all for stick, thank you for all for sticking it out here tonight with us. Thank you. Almost missed it.
You're safe. Uh, David, I'm a county voter, um, nothing to do with the jail, um. My question is, what, what do I find, where do we all find a progress report on the workforce housing, where, where does that stand?
And, and you remember, this is that question and answer, you know, I am about that, I'm suggesting you talk to your county commissioner or Jeremy, the county administrator.
Okay, give me a call, I will.
Thank, thank you very much, thank you, all right, anybody else I mentioned? Thank you again, folks, for all being in here, for, for John.